I am.
I'm meeting the board. Plagued.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to ask for a motion to amend the agenda to set the date for the food pantry, sale of the old food pantry.
Okay, make a motion to do that amendment.
Second it. All in favor?
Would you like to put that in?
Can we put it into March 11?
I mean, on the agenda.
Under approved liquor license for the fair. Did you have a chance to read the minutes from February 20th meeting?
Just approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We need to approve the claims filed with the county auditor in the amount of three hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-six cents.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approve employee claims filed with the county auditor for nine hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Liquor license for Buchanan County Fair Association.
Hey. We got an issue with that. Uh, the listing of individual owners and stuff is not accurate by no means.
Fred was gonna change that. I emailed him that after he asked me to put it on the agenda. That's the one that was sent to me from the Iowa, um, liquor division. So he was going to get that changed. So once it's approved and I go in and approve it, it should be updated. I already talked to Fred about it.
Yeah, I talked to him yesterday too, so he, uh, he's gonna get you something today then on the other.
He doesn't get it to me. He has to update it in the system.
So my question is how do we go ahead? They don't have to have this done until April 1st, so to approve something that's not accurate?
It's not your liability.
No, but I, still, it's on the agenda to prove the liquor license.
You are correct.
So how do I, I'm not in favor of making a motion to approve it until it's accurate.
Well, that's your decision. We'll do it again then. And you can let them know that you're not approving it.
Yeah. And I told Fred yesterday if I wind up being on, I wasn't sure, but I told him it probably wind up being on the following Monday's agenda and he was okay with that.
Right.
So no action taken on that.
Okay. Um, we need to set a date for the sale, for the public hearing to begin the process of selling the old food pantry building. And I think March 11.
So when you guys were at, had your closed session, you discussed the possibility of having the public hearing on March 11th and then opening bids on April 15th.
So can we, do we have time to get that in the newspaper? The 10 and 20? Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Opening your bids on what day again?
April 15th.
That will give us enough time to get some advertising out there and stuff.
Mm-hmm, should.
Because we'll have to, I'll have to put the public hearing notice in the newspaper. And then once that is approved, officially approved to sell the property and then you'll have to advertise it again for the bid, accepting bids.
I would, I just wanna make sure that we got it advertised for sale. I would like to give it as much as a month. So people are aware of it. And check it out.
March 11th.
April 15th, that'd be a month, in two days.
Okay. Are you gonna put that ad together, Dawn?
I can.
Your realtor experience you got would probably be handy with that.
I can try to put it together. See what I can do in Canva. Been a while.
Sure you'll get it. I have confidence in it.
Okay.
So.
Can we set the date for March 11th? Do I have a motion for that?
Yes, I'll make a motion for March 11th.
And then opening the bids on?
Aye.
Uh, we have one other one, on nine fifteen.
Motion, March 11th, nine fifteen?
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, items for discussion placed on file following maneuver management plans, D and L Hogs LLC Fremont Township, section 16.
Just on file?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
John? You're up.
Well, finally still make, finally make some headway on this bond program. Um, is most acceptable of all this is merchants, merchants bonding company. Um, they don't ask for financial information like Old Republic did.
Okay.
Um, I'm gonna give you a copy of each one. It's got blanket.
Did you get any thing from Nationwide?
They won't do a blanket. If you want it all on a blanket, that's gonna be the most reasonable. And up and approve accordingly.
Okay.
So the district court judge can take care of yours and you can take care of everybody else's. My question with Wileene last week, and she hadn't gotten back to me yet, was what we already have is it sufficient for the rest of the elected officials? And my goal here was is to get you three taken care of at this point, and if we need to add the rest of them to the blanket, we can do that. And the rate is three dollars and fifty cents per thousand. So it's plenty reasonable enough. And if you handle money, which you don't, I mean, I didn't come in here last week to pay my license tags, um, then it would be five dollars a thousand for each one of you, but that's not gonna be the case with you three. It'd be the case with the trip. But not here.
Okay, and I think the minimum.
Treasure is fifty K.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Right.
And we have I, did we have something to write from Eileen saying that what we got already is sufficient because?
I will, I will.
You know, I'm questioning that, the way chapter 64 reads.
Right, right. There is bonding language in the backside of that, what you exist we have.
That's only lists out the other officials.
It does, it does. It doesn't list you. Sixty-four is where everybody's getting all stirred up on the county supervisors in general. I mean, it does go down. It does list each one of the elected officials on the minimum to that.
I'm questioning, and I don't know how it works with Chris, being she's a commissioner of elections too. And the crazy things that we got going on in our world with the elections and stuff like that, I just wondered if if that's a sufficient amount going with that minimal amount. I, how comfortable do you feel with that, Chris? It's you that's got your neck out there on this stuff.
If it has anything to do with elections, this bond won't cover it anyway.
I think that falls under other insurance.
No, it falls under nothing. It will not, if something happens and there's some big hurrah with the election, there is absolutely no insurance that will cover it. And that went into effect when the secretary of state pushed through this technical infraction and fines and possible felonies for commissioners. There's not an insurance company out that will touch it.
My.
So we're on our own.
There is there is a House bill amended language of this whole thing also. It's in the works now. I rather that's gonna get completed before the end of legislations, who knows? But it's in, it's in the pot for them to consider this. This might clean all that up, you know? Deal with laws that were made in the eighteen hundreds is a little bit absurd.
Mm-hmm.
I agree.
But that's where we're at.
And I'm hoping they move forward getting that correction done, and then that would be something maybe the government would, government would assign instantly.
Right. 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 I would imagine Isaac pushing this. They gotta be behind it, saying, this is nuts. Clean this up.
Yeah.
So let's move forward with the.
I will leave you there.
For not listed on that other.
It's an application, and then I'll leave one for John.
Get something, Wileene, get it on.
I will. I'll forward it to both you and Dawn as soon as I get it. My Senator, a reminder again late Friday, and I didn't, of course, here comes Saturday, Sunday, I haven't heard anything. You'll notice the bond amount there is set for one seventy-five. That is, so we can include all the rest of the elected officials with that minimum amount if we so have to. Um, on the applicant part of that first line, being Buchanan County. My suggestion is on next to that is put your names, because when you look down a little bit more, it talks about social security numbers.
Or F I E I N number.
Right.
In our county number word. Let me find that out.
I could find it out.
I really don't wanna put my social security number all over everything.
Right, yeah. This one here is a little less dramatic than Old Republic was.
Yeah. Yeah, when I first seen that, it was kind of a holy cow for me.
Yeah.
Because I think that should all be Buchanan County's information up above, because on the next page it has public official.
It does, about three fourths way down, right?
Yeah, they're not gonna get a financial statement from me.
With the underwriting discretion, Dawn, this is out of my control. This is the insurance company's running this. Now, will they ask for that?
Because it shouldn't matter what my, what my finances. It's a position.
We've got some clarification from merchants, pundits, why that's necessary and if it needs to be filled in.
Okay.
Find out what they, find out, so Nationwide, do we, they don't do a blanket one?
Right.
But they do it, they do a position one?
Individual.
Okay, so if we go individual, is it like more expensive?
It's gonna be more, more expensive.
Let's get their paperwork and find out what they're asking for too.
Okay.
I guess, I guess I'm most confused on the, the reading of this chapter sixty-four, cuz I what I recall reading in there, it never said anything about that blanket one being allowed.
Right.
So I would have to read, read that, and I, I think we need to consult with our county attorney on this too.
Yeah, makes sense.
And this is, this is serious stuff. We need to make sure that we're moving ahead, like everything, very accurate on this and getting all the Ts crossed and the Is down, what needs to be done.
Yeah.
With the county attorney on that, and if you can get that information back to us.
Okay.
Anytime, I'm gonna do some work, email or phone call to legislatures.
Yeah.
Trying to build a fire under.
Language, I don't know how much it cleans up. I just, I think it just says, well, you have X amount of time to get it.
Well, no, they, they said that they were working, that I think in that bill, it says to working towards just insurance policy coverage. Getting rid of the bonding issue.
That will simplify a lot of things.
Mm-hmm, sure would. No action taken?
Until we get further information, I guess, we probably not gonna have here. Ms. Chair?
I don't have, do you have any further questions?
No.
Okay. So I'll check on the federal ID number for the county, clarify the social security, why? Check on Nationwide's individual bond, call the county attorney.
And then clarification on Wileene.
Yeah, I will.
Sounds like she's a very busy lady throughout the state on this.
It is. Yeah.
Hey, thanks for coming in.
No problem. Anytime. I'll forward both of you, and I'll include Chris on the edition, so we're kinda all on the same page and go from there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So.
Yep.
Next item, health insurance renewal.
Karen's not able to be here today cuz she's off on vacationing, so, uh, uh, was with Karen last week and there's been, what I, my understanding, I, we had Ryan, uh, insurance partners on the phone and spoke to him. There's been no changes, so his status quo. So I guess all they need to do is just go ahead and approve the
Renewal.
Renewal.
Okay, well, this has to be back to them by March 1st. She's gone all week.
No, she'll be back tomorrow. Oh, who's gone all week?
I thought Karen was gone all week.
No, I don't believe so. Is she?
I just need to know, I, I mean, in the past, it's something I've always signed and sent back, um.
Can you please sign it and send it back?
I, I just wanna clarify who's getting this done, so it's done and taken care of, so we don't miss the deadline by Friday.
Mm-hmm. I have a motion for health insurance renewal with the auditor to sign in return.
I'll make that motion.
All right, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I will, um, when I send it back, I'll include Karen on the email, so she knows everything that's going on with it.
Right, thank you. And next up is lawn care. So that would be for public health?
Public health, E O C, food pantry, DHS. I got a copy of what we did last year, I believe. Last year, we advertised for it and we opened bids mid-April for just for those two sites.
And then we then, we've been taking care of the senior center.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's only a short one block run for the custodians who go up there and take care of that.
So if we can advertise that and have the opening.
Oh, let's go like April 1st.
Okay.
That'll give me a month to have it out there.
Right, and I think that we're probably not gonna get by with April 15th, not long until then.
That's my fear.
Yeah.
Especially if I do it the last week of March. Usually just the guy out of Cedar Rapids that bids it. I don't know how it pays for him to drive up and try to appear and do these two little spots, but.
Let's do the last weekend.
Yes. So the twenty-fifth?
Yes.
I'll shoot for nine fifteen.
So I'll make that motion to advertise for that and it's being by March twenty-fifth.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Brian?
Good morning. And Alex just came up this morning to
Alex.
Talk about the interchange. I'm not sure which subject he had on first.
We actually have an intersection of W-35 and W-40 in Quoski.
And the question is, when the city discussed it, they, they wanted to do the roundabout method, which is significant, about a hundred thousand more, Alex has got the numbers.
What if we say we're not gonna do the roundabout method after talking to the firm bureau?
We, we, I, we haven't, I have no heartburn with that, Alex is.
They said it would be, I don't know, we got we got two issues here. The truckers not wanting, there's that heavy truck traffic going through Quoski. I mean, you've got your, a lot of grain hauling and other stuff going through Quoski, major. It seems like an easy route for them to take to get down or can get connected in down there.
Yeah, it is. It's a major truck route. There's no question on that.
So then because of that, their city of Quoski is having trouble with excessive speed with truckers going through their town. And I believe they need to look at some other method to have some flashing signage there. And maybe a deputy writing a few tickets and the word of mouth travels pretty fast.
Yep, it does. Yeah, but the real accidents have been cars too. Um, Brian Quinn's had cars in his yard. Boy, he's way back there. That's, had to go clear through the cemetery to get back into his yard.
Mm-hmm.
And, but you're right in the answer of, um, other ways to slow them down, flashing lights, chevrons on that curve would probably be.
Yeah, with chevrons, entirety of that curve is paved. You see, entirety of the curve falls in the intersection.
And so you couldn't put chevrons over by the cemetery?
No, you gotta have them within seven foot off the shoulder of main line.
Okay. Okay, well, there's.
Well, and this, the only option here is this.
The flashing lights, this.
The flashing lights, where, in other words, but we could bring these costs to the city council and find out, and then we can have another discussion on it, whether they wanna do a ten year payback thing on that, if they wanna take that kinda debt on.
Yeah, that was kinda the, what I was hearing from the ma, maintenance super, city, maintenance superintendent is that they would need us to finance them and I, and he was, brought his attention that we do charge an interest and it was set at five percent.
Yeah, not only that, I, I don't know how close they are getting their last payment down on the bridge.
Yeah, I'm not sure on that one either. It's gotta be coming up pretty soon.
As they missed an year payment on that.
Have you heard what the mayor thinks?
Their last payment, their last payment on their bridge is due July 1st.
What we heard, Dawn, was that, uh, city council voted to put in a roundabout, but still they were all aware, or should have been, that, um, that still the board of supervisors has to save, because that's additional cost and there's no guarantee the board is gonna want to spend that additional cost. And it's a very viable answer to turn it, bring it in to a, closer to a ninety degree with that radius yet.
Yes, Quoski, I know, but you're still not solving the issue on.
The speed.
Yeah.
No, that's gonna, gonna have to be set in separate. They wanted to put up stop signs, but it doesn't meet the M E T C D guidance. There's no way I would dare put that on as part of this project, because then the whole project be thrown out.
Yeah.
And so um, that you could go back to trying to, we could, we can easily get the cost of flashing lights and such and present to them. Is the board of supervisors interested, willing, and splitting those costs?
I can't. The signs?
Um, flashing signs, yes.
What's the anticipated cost?
There in the vicinity of speed feedback signs are about five thousand. Um, just a regular flashing lights down closer to two thousand. And I've had a couple that we had paid for with federal funds and number of years ago, didn't, yes.
The, um, the feedback ones, so that, where's that feedback to?
What it does, it, it's a flash, it tells you your speed.
Uh-huh.
And it will record the speeds also.
Okay.
And.
So if we ever wanna do a study on, on that road later on, we have some.
We have one right now, and I'm thinking it's sitting probably up by Aurora. And I'm, I'm not sure where it's physically at today.
Here, here's the thing about is if we go ahead and approve for any one city, and then, then the rest, all the cities have got problem issue with.
With speeds, yeah.
It seems like when we got traffic, it's going faster and faster as the years go on and stuff. So I would say that, that the city wants it, it'd be on the city.
Be on the city. We just can't, as part of this project, put up stop signs, which is what they were wanting.
Well, the thing about is truckers too, if you put a stop sign when they're, they're starting to roll and not by the edge of town, they're up to thirty mile an hour to make that incline hill there, they're not gonna wanna stop from a dead stop there and take off to make that hit.
Absolutely don't, no. That was the advantage of the roundabout, but.
By the roundabout, I don't think it's gonna solve the speeding issue.
It does, Dawn, pretty well. Um,
Yeah.
That's, that's the big advantage to a roundabout, is it slows them down.
Yeah, they'll have to slow down to at least twenty miles an hour. They.
Through it.
Well, so the city.
It's hard to start through it.
Really?
You need to take it back to the city and see if they wanna do like a ten-year thing on that.
That, that was the feedback I'd heard on the pa, on paying back. The comment was made to me, and again, this is not the city, the mayor. Um, well, I think I have had conversations with him, that the maintenance man that's said they, they don't have the funding that even to do the rest. We could end at the city limits and just stop our project there. But that would leave close to a quarter mile.
Uh, about a third of a mile.
About a third of a mile
Mm-hmm.
of old road in there. Then they'd be expecting us in the future to come in and help.
Yeah, cuz I think the, your roundabout, if I would think, if I remember right on that design, estimated cost and stuff on that, roundabout was like three hundred and seventeen thousand and the, the, the right angle turn intersection was about a hundred thousand less than.
Right.
Do we really wanna take on the extra? Because we could be spending that money someplace else.
Yeah.
You mean, just tie it in where it is, is the other option, is a truly a third option. But that's the one that does leave some risks, that what we've gotta do is tear out about two hundred and forty feet of pavement just to tie in, and to tie in at a ninety takes about three hundred feet.
Tie in at ninety, uh, yeah, oh, well, it'd be longer than that. Four hundred.
Oh, okay.
So you're saying that doing it existing the way it is now, the intersection way it is?
I've gotta tear up two hundred and forty feet.
So can we get an idea what that cost to be doing that versus doing this right angle turn intersection?
Yeah.
How much more the difference would be in cost for doing it?
Yep.
The town, I'm, I'm guessing, does it they're not having no big benefit from the right hang, angle turn intersection?
It doesn't slow the speed down at all.
So they're not getting what they want out of it.
No.
Well, it'd be less expensive for them to buy a five thousand dollar.
Oh, by far, by far, speed feedback sign.
Yes.
I'm surprised they haven't moved ahead with that before.
We have one, we, the county can kind of secondary roads owns one because we got it from working on a safety grant. And we moved it around the county's better policy.
Right now, the D O, Iowa D O T has got a thing out there that qualifies. Cities to get them, but they gotta have a population between one thousand and ten thousand. And the road has to be a state highway coming through. So that pretty much disqualifies.
There's been efforts to try and get these included on their safety programs within the state. Because it is one of the few things that works.
Yeah, the smaller communities are struggling more with their budgets, but they got, got left out.
Ah, yes. Well, you notice that state highways too. Well, you can have county roads with more traffic than the state highways, but they don't seem to care. Alright, so the answer on that one is Alex will look at the difference in costs, or do you have a feel off the top of your head, Alex?
Now, off the top of my head, yeah, look at my spreadsheet again.
So estimated cost between the roundabout and the.
No, between a right hand intersection on existing alignment.
Compare it to what, or would just get that estimate?
Yeah, well, the right hand with our, Chris would be, we have to tear out a little bit more, Alex said about four hundred feet. Of pavement than, than curve it in to bring it into W forty and close to a ninety.
But we're not comparing it to anything else, just getting an estimate on what that project could cost. I just wanna make sure I'm understanding.
No, 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 that versus on the existing alignment. So if you just tore out and put back the way it sits today versus bringing it in at a ninety.
Oh, is this all affecting the main entrance driveway to the cemetery?
Neither would impact and.
Roundabout would not impact, uh.
How much land would be taken up?
For?
Roundabout.
Not a lot.
The city owns most of the ground in there, but there was a little piece they didn't, but they said they were acquiring it anyway.
Everything up to about like ten foot behind Denny Springs, storage units sit is all public ground, whether city or county.
Yeah, they had acquired that years ago because of the flood drainage ditch there.
Was that to the flood draining ditch?
Yeah, what are you gonna have to do with that? You're gonna have to do mass size culverts going through there?
No, uh, the realignment of bringing it into a T, you'll have to extend the culverts under Quoski diagonal, uh, roundabout you and I.
Well, we kinda gotta throw this back in the city council ball, see, see what they want, what they're willing to do and how, how badly they want a roundabout.
Well, yeah, but I was getting the impression from the board that, like, no on the roundabout, period. Is that what I'm hearing from you guys right now?
What it was is the cost issue, one, which was one.
The cost issue and when, and after talking to the people that use that road.
Oh, yeah, the truckers probably would.
The truckers, they're definitely, they're like, that's a bad place for a roundabout. They don't, not that they mind roundabouts, but they just, there was not an optimal.
They don't wanna slow, yeah. They don't wanna risk having to stop there. There you go, because even with the roundabout, you may have to stop.
Right.
Yeah, because it's a healing issue going into it.
So this project, whatever is decided, if the city decides something, this is funding that the county's going to front for them?
That's the only way. Subject to a twenty eighty.
Decide if we're gonna do the upfront money, funding and wait over ten year period to get the money back.
And then how estimated guess on when this project would take place?
We're hoping to have it under contract in September.
Depends on how things keep going, because we need to.
But possibly this fiscal year?
Yes.
Is this in the budget?
Yes, this is a pro- a budgeted project.
Okay, this first I talked, heard about it, that's why I asked if it was in already.
And the funding all goes through the state D O T, you know, the, the only exceptions to that is. We've got a little bit of shoulder in and we have to get addressed out in the county portion yet. And a couple box culverts to extend. And then if we're getting that curves change, I'll need that right away to buy. So almost all, all the construction costs. Excluding shoulders and box culvert extension are done through the farm market account.
Okay, well, does it do anything to any other project, prior projects that you had planned or?
No, but what's also happened on this one is I've got one point four eight million from inter cog under S T B G. Funding and five hundred thousand in safety funds. And the roundabout was not part of that, so that's not, no strings tied.
Oh, we couldn't.
They've, they've capped it off at a half million anyway, so.
I was just wondering if that light would come in their safety fund.
Lot, they're not really too, and I visited a week ago, last, no, it was last Friday. With Nikki Stin on that, there isn't any programs out there right now to fund the construction of roundabouts in towns. You can go after, once we get our local road safety plan, we'd probably go after on the federal funds. But I think you've got so many towns trying to build them right now that. They're eating up all the monies, or would eat up all the monies if the state funded them.
It's just a bad place for that, for a roundabout there.
It's got some advantages, but I can also see the truckers that are coming in off of W forty. Not wanting to slow clear down to the fifteen mile an hour. And that's almost what it would amount to, to go through the roundabout.
Yeah. Yeah, you see truckers, they, they creep from, it's pretty tight, you know, they.
And, and as you started too, they're building their speed up, heading northbound.
Yeah, that's it, because they got, that's a pretty steep hill to climb going out. I, I just, uh, I don't think a roundabouts the answer for.
That location.
The city.
That location.
And I think it was gonna be a lot of pushback on it and.
Yeah, Clayton, there's always a lot of pushback on roundabouts in the rural areas.
Thing about is, we're, we're not dealing with trying to make intersections safer because of saving life. Even though I'm surprised when somebody went through that cemetery and took out about six stones, it's something more serious didn't happen, injuries.
That was just a couple months ago.
Yeah.
But Brian Quinn's ended in one, ended up in his yard, and then there was no one just outside his yard.
How are they, like, I just don't understand that.
They're going way too fast.
And maybe this would be by putting this flashing light that would help that, if somebody's seeing this light flashing. To get people slowed down so they're making that.
You heard the comment from Scott Wazinski just lately about, we call it the four E frost curve on W thirteen. After we paved the shoulders and put up the flashing lights there and the rumbles on the shoulders, how that virtually is eliminated with crashes that were occurring there. And.
And put rumbles, rumble strips.
As a separate project, we could go, but it's in town's a problem. I can't get safety funds for inside, no.
Yeah.
Always dawn, yes, but if we ever got to paving on W forty or when that occurs way down the future.
Yeah, we got somebody in Jessup doing like rumble strips.
You only get your attention, they, they let you know that there's something ahead.
I, I love rumble strips. I, I think they save lives and, and I.
My answer is, the statistics are saying we're doing something right, just what it is, I'm not sure.
Alright, so we got our answer on.
Yeah, Alex will look in those numbers and we'll get back with you.
If I will say, for whatever's gonna happen, I need an answer about March nineteenth.
Yeah, so we could have it on next Monday's agenda and, and then.
Gotta go back to city of Quoski too, so that'll be first Monday in March, or second Monday in March.
Well, we can either tell the city, this is what we're doing, if you want us to stop at the city limits, we can.
Wait, so just, there's nothing wrong with giving them options?
And, and is the board willing to fund them at five percent interest and ten year payback?
See, that's another thing. And, and not only that, the pushback on the roundabout.
Well, no, no, we're same, we're assuming we're gonna go back and, um, Alex is gonna get for three costs. Played out, what a roundabout costs, what it ties in existing, what it ties in at ninety. We'll be back on the next Monday's agenda.
Yep.
And then the board can say to the city, hey, you either wanna stop at the city limits or.
Yep.
Or this is your option, this is what we're willing to do.
Yeah, and that should, if we make a decision on this coming Monday, that should get you.
Yeah, that should get me everything I need to.
To move forward.
Yep.
And if they're not doing the roundabout, do they need the additional funding?
Yes, they do, because they've got close to a third of a mile of roadway at about six hundred thousand a mile. So there's about two hundred thousand that the city.
I think no matter what, the county's gonna have to front this money for the city because they are financially in a lot of trouble right now.
And they don't have to, they wouldn't have even the two hundred thousand setting back.
No, that, I, yeah, we're all in agreement on that.
No, they, I know they don't.
Yeah. Yeah, they're eight hundred people or six hundred people, it's over the five hundred. Otherwise, we'd be owning the roads.
So if this project goes through as far, I have never been through this process where a city, we are basically lending the city money, us city money. Twenty eighty agreement, what else is needed?
That was, that was just the twenty eighty, but it has to be recorded at the secretary of state's office, and that's where we got in trouble at Hazleton.
Yep, yeah, any twenty eighty agreement does.
So that.
So could we go off of the, similar of the one, if I can find it, for the bridge payment?
It would, or what we propose, what we had with Fairbank.
Yeah, Fairbank would be the best example.
They're gonna have, they don't have to know too upfront, you know, with this five percent interest rate, what is gonna, like, the total cost at the end of the payback period is gonna wind up being.
It's very simple to do the math on that.
Yeah.
This, well, what's the start of the date?
I said there's schedules out there for that too.
Yeah. Both of us had to have engineering and economics. That was one of the required classes.
Sometimes.
Could that, in the twenty eighty, we're actually, this kinda goes along with Chris's question, in the twenty eighty. Were they, city wind up, wind up owing us two hundred thousand dollars over ten year period? Okay, is that spelled out in that twenty eight E to cover that, or does that have to be an additional agreement?
It could easily be covered purely in the twenty eighty that you've got originally Clayton, so it, here's, here's an agreement that says you guys are gonna pay us this back at a five percent interest. Based annually, so your annual payments are X amount of dollars over ten years.
Okay.
You done with that? I am. Alright, Chris, you have any further questions?
Take that free.
Alright, let's go on to the seasonal mowing position for secondary roads.
Yes, we've hired an individual part time to run the mower tractor in the summer. And we'd have, we'd go through the process of advertising every time. We've only had one, last year was only one gentleman applied and.
Is this our same gentleman?
Same gentleman.
Oh, good.
Yes, he does come with a personality.
Yeah, I know, I like his personality.
We have to. Yeah, I, I'm sure he'll be back, that's kinda the word, um. Let's put it like this, if I tried to hire somebody else, I'd probably have some real legal basis issues. Cause he's prior service, he's been doing the job, he's been doing a good job at it.
Well, we gotta, we gotta follow the process and.
Gotta follow the process.
Everybody an opportunity.
Yep, and we are interviewing with Karen this Friday. Um, so Karen, we'll be around on Friday for the interviews for the blade operator out of Brandon.
So move, I guess, just move forward with.
Move forward, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Do you need a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to move forward with advertising for a seasonal mower operator.
No, second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have any further questions of us or it's the end of?
No, I don't. Do you have any, anything for the good of the cause?
Oh, I did, I did talk, I tried, called, tried calling Cheryl and didn't get an answer on those trees. And I know that they said Tom Aloflin was planning on doing it, that's about two, three weeks ago on that Friday. And then when we visited with Brian Donnelly, he was opposed to us going out in the field because the ground was too soft yet.
Yeah, just something you gotta keep an eyeball on, make sure that it's good enough to get heavy equipment out there.
Yeah.
Yep, so I had nothing else.
Okay. Other comments?
Who's doing the, the road in front of the cemetery and, and, because Doug, when did Doug retire?
Doug retired in December.
Cause somebody left a lot aside for me to either rake and throw back in the yard or throw in the ditch or something, it was.
Where's the cemetery you have, you're referring to?
In, in Brandon, as you go, there's a ground, first ground road to the left as you go east out of Brandon. Larry McConnell's place, you know, where the sawmill is.
Oh, yeah.
You go along.
Okay, up there.
Yeah, and somebody got, I don't know why they went so far, the road's wide there, but I've got a lot of work to do.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have, we're trying to hire a blade operator where there is, on the stand through. So, we have, I don't know who for sure.
Well, this man.
Last one to blade.
Just, I don't know.
Appreciate it, thanks.
We'll.
Well, the pot holes on Brandon, on Dubin right now too, some, there's pot holes in there like crazy.
There is, here's, here's the risk they've got, uh, take care of a pothole, you have to cut it deep. So if we loosen all this material up, when we get the wet sloppy snows or even the snow is this Friday, that Friday, Wednesday. We're back to where we have a real mess.
My wife says that it's been like that for, um, Hopkins, especially towards the. The, the blacktop road, I mean, you turn the corner, it's, it's just washboard and out and it's done in every sense.
Yeah.
For the whole time she's been alive. Then it's just the soil.
Yeah, different soil types, we keep playing around with different things, trying to come up with some answers in that first stretch, two hundred and fortieth, before you get to the curb. We played with a bunch of different materials in there, trying to see if we can slow things down. So the first five hundred feet's actually treated with Portland cement. And then we tried some clay crate, which other counties have had good luck with, and we haven't had any good luck with clay crate, we tried some lignans, we tried some. Uh, team base one, all right, we tried, the clay crate, we've had better luck, but the team base one, we didn't have.
Well, what the guys did out there in Nolan Avenue with that pothole issue out there, whatever they did there, I mean, it is a little rough, but there's no potholes there now. It's a little.
Okay.
Rough driving and simple brading will take care of that, but, uh, that might be an answer for. Problem that these folks have got doing the same project because it worked out well on Nolan.
The worst area that I saw in the Brandon diagonal was over by Don Chanka's place, and if you get farther south there, I thought it got pretty decent. That was a couple of weeks ago, is that still accurate?
Well, they're talking about Dugan, weren't you?
Dugan. Oh, okay, yeah, that's where our new roadside, our county conservation director lives. But I haven't been down on that one for a while.
It's pretty much just when you come up Brandon, you know.
Getting the cannon room, that's all washed for it out there.
Yeah, it's kinda that, those first.
That first hill.
Yeah.
Yep, going uphill with a, from a stop.
It's stop sign.
Have you got a lot of truck traffic or anything on that road with farmer's home grain?
Grain trucks.
Yeah, they've beaten.
A lot of them.
That and the, the, um, animal, fox, you know, that type of thing, there's a lot of.
It's busy, it's busy.
Yeah, we just gotta get the legislatures to realize our roads are busier, busier and heavier and heavier loads.
Did you get us that money to fix them?
And it's working the other way around, because the actual forecast from the farm market, or from the road use taxes decrease instead of increasing.
Anything else? Okay.
I'm gonna go back to Wayne North again, surprise. Um, Saturday morning, we had coffee with Representative Craig Johnson. Uh, we discussed S S B three one six nine, which I believe was commented on here last week. He wasn't very familiar with it because it was a Senate bill, so we talked about how a bill like that would affect communities and their governing bodies. And how it goes completely against Iowa Code three fifty-two, where power is specifically given to local citizens and local governments. Excuse me, to preserve the state's finite supply of agricultural land. And gives them the means of protection from non-agricultural development pressures. A similar bill was introduced last year and will most assuredly come around again next year. We also talked about House Study Bill seven twenty-two. That bill will affect eighty-eight small Iowa counties. By allowing a twenty-seven million dollar tax credit paid out over a number of years. To companies that come in with money-making projects in rural communities. We asked him how that would affect the taxes promised to Buchanan County by Next Era or other energy companies. He wasn't sure, but found the question interesting and would try to look into it further. Uh, in case anyone's interested, he's completely against turbine fields in Buchanan County. Isn't interesting, a very nice coffee, he's, he's, um. It was a pleasant time to have, and he spent a lot of time with us, and we appreciated it.
Yeah.
There's gonna be another town hall on March second, I don't know how many legislatures are gonna be there at Kloski.
Hey, Wolfies. I suppose Wolfie'd serve us breakfast pizza, do you?
That's this upcoming Saturday then.
Yeah. Will the board be going? I'm probably gonna show up.
He'll probably go, I, it'll depend on what I, what time it is and what I have going on.
Um, we state with that's gonna be, uh. February twenty eighth. At Wolfies and.
No. Mark, Saturday, March second?
March second.
It's gonna, there's, there will be another town hall meeting at Arlington. For sure on that day, I know they got one scheduled for their last one up in Arlington. And usually about six legislatures there for that. Chad Ingles was there, and Zumbak usually was there and, and.
Have a group for all, Wolf people can ask it. Anytime, or you sell those cards with a question?
No, it's sponsored, it's sponsored by the Farm Bureau, does it up there for Fayette County, they sponsor it. And they try to invite in, make sure all the area representatives, because these represent legislatures, I mean, they. Cover pieces of every county and stuff, and they're kind of piecemealed and everything for they cover their district and stuff. And there's usually about six that come there, Brian was able to attend the last one. And what it is, is just, uh, they have about an hour there is all they have, so it's just a handhold thing and. And then you get to speak and it is, they, they try to keep it so people are respectful and don't go on to major lengths. So other people don't have the opportunity and it's kind of, the Farm Bureau kind of monitors that and it's up to him to speak up and say. Okay, it's time to move on to a topic or whatever.
That would be like the March second one also, would be like the same thing.
I, I would imagine, but I don't know who's sponsoring that, I haven't heard no, who the sponsor is of the March second.
And you get to go up and ask some questions later after, because I went to the one in Kloski. And it wasn't, you know, we just kind of raised your hand and then they answered your question.
And, yeah, probably Wolfies March second, and I don't know for sure on time, my guess is probably about a nine o'clock thing. And if you go, uh, on Johnson's website, I think he's got it posted on there.
Will Zumbak be there too?
I hope he is, and Ingles, I hope they're all show up.
I think last time everybody stood up.
From what Craig, Craig told us.
There'll be three of them there.
Did you guys want me there then the Saturday?
More welcome to come here.
No, you can't have slept too.
John Cletwell just popped in and, uh, March, Kloski's at ten. And March sixteenth is the next one in Arlington at nine A M. Thank you, John.
So the one at Wolfies, uh, is on the twenty eighth building?
No, it's on.
No, it's March second.
March second. It's a Saturday.
Something is really surprising to me that the legislators brought up, there is a bill out there on the forest reserve exemptions. And I was quite surprised that they came right out and said instead of making a statewide thing that covers all the counties. To leave it up to the individual counties and how they want to handle the forest reserve exemption thing. And that was a plus, that's, usually you don't hear. That.
Giving you a little control.
Little control. Well, I was just pleased to hear that because we're a lot different in Buchanan County and what some of these big forest areas are. Timber areas are going through in southern Iowa and up in northeast Iowa, we got a different client field here.
Yeah, there's some other legislation out there that have major impact to the counties, and I tried to forward that on some of that too. But they're looking at, in the governor's effort to reduce all these committees, they're looking at. Eliminating the secondary road fund distribution committee. And just turn it over to the state, let the state decide where the monies goes.
I'm just gonna bite my tongue on that.
Yeah. Yeah, we've got a system that's been working for close to thirty years right now. Finally, because before that, it was the state trying to evaluate the condition of your roads and give you more money based on the condition of your roads. And so you're finding huge swings in funding.
Is anything, the way that you stood, does anything have to do with population? You know, Oak County has a lot more people.
Yes, and it's, it still does.
And County bit on that.
It's, still has some to do with population, but it also has to do with traffic volumes. The area, the area of the county, how large the county is. Um, how many miles of road do you have in the county and what are your feet of bridge decks and. So there's about seven factors involved with it that. It's a system that's considered to be fair by probably ninety-seven of the ninety-nine counties.
Small schools always get ripped off because, like you said, with, you know, the population in these small towns and, and. That's great that they can say, hey, we've got all this grant money available, but how many people are shut out because they don't have enough population or money, or whatever. Probably being those things.
Yeah, I've even seen where many of these small towns will turn down bridge funds because they can't administer a project that's several hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, so if the county's not willing to work with the cities. It goes to other cities.
Anything else?
They don't have anything. Nobody else got anything, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, own favor?
Aye.